Until probably about a month ago and, and he's gotten a lot of equipment out of there, old equipment, trucks, things like that, that, that stuff is all gone. Um, you know, there's, there's no contamination issues anymore with, with oils and different things like that, that, that those things are the things that we cleaned up that, that I think are the most noticeable.
I, I think I read in here, but the property you're wanting to be rezoned, what is it being used for now? Is it just sitting there doing that?
Currently, the, the current, if you could pull up the other slot again, um, the, the top portion here currently has cattle in it. We rented to a, a local farmer that brings cattle in and they graze on it. And that's all it's being used for currently. This area was what we called the paint barn. That's where they refurbished dumpster, sanded and painted them. Um, that stuff has all been moved down to the other part of the facility. So, so all of our people are in one spot now. We're, we're working towards, I don't want to say closing that building because the building's there. It's a good building, but we're working at getting everything out of there and moving that down. So, so right now it, it's being used as farm, but I've already have noticed to them that, that in the next year or two, he may not be able to do that anymore. But the intention is just borrow dirt, correct?
Yes. That's one of the things is that the black line is actually our solid waste approved from items boundary and we, they do allow us to go in here and remove dirt from that area. Uh, you have stormwater regulations when you have to do that. So this is, that's, that's a permitting process that once we have the plans finalized, we would go in and here's, we're going to get, uh, dirt out of there. And we have pulled the soil samples from that, ran it through. So it is a usable thing for, for us to either use cover or to cap the landfill or to, uh, build a cell for the landfill.
So if we allowed a rezone for that, for the entire parcel, at some point in the future, that would allow you to open up to expand the landfill into there?
That's possible, but you also got to consider Pink Creek is right here.
I understand that.
And that is a limitation for us for a setback from a landfill. So.
Hmm. There's a hundred and some acres though. I mean, that's a pretty good parcel. Uh, I guess that would be a concern whether you stayed there or some, you sold it to someone else in the future, then we would be faced with possibilities since we rezoned the entire parcel. Cause I have was under the impression we were just looking at where your daughter, your hash line was, that was what you were looking to rezone and that as far as that part of that parcel.
That's what I was hoping because of that pond, cause that's 80 acres, that top shade is 80 and the part you're wanting to re, you're wanting to rezone everything that's yellow highlighted, including where the pond is. And that southeast corner of that, uh, curved long spliced on pike where the pond is, that's currently wood, wooded. Isn't that behind the pond? That, that's wooded now. Yes. And so you're planning on clear cutting that?
Yes.
And a lot of that to the, I guess it would be the northeast 40, that block that's up in the square. That looks like that's mostly forested too, with some exception of clearing. So.
I know there's a gas line that that's what you can see here. That's the gas line you put there.
Yeah.
Now they're talking about expanding that currently because there, there's also, they're looking to expand the line that's down on 400 and like by route three, they've talked to us about putting in another, uh, easement in there for a bigger gas line.
What's your setback on the pink, pink creek?
Pink Creek, I believe it's 200 feet.
So you can't actually have a landfill within 200 feet?
You're looking at like this swath, this swath here and then let's say you're saying, oh, this is big enough for a, an ex, an expansion. You'd have to be 200 feet setback from that. Then you have a property line setback, which I wish I knew what it was off the top of my head is this is that as far as how far your limits can be from your property line. This is.
That Indiana code you gave us, Tom, doesn't have the setbacks, does it?
The state is, or you don't have to, you don't have to vote. The state has setbacks. I believe, well, they have from dwelling. I'm trying to figure out how far it is from property. I didn't.
900 feet from a dwelling unless somebody signs a waiver, then it's 600 feet. Is that what I'm sure of? I, I wasn't sure what the.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
300 and 200, because it varies between states.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
It says 600 feet from any potable water supply wells, 100 feet from classified wetland, uh, 2640 from a public or school, 1,250 from a hospital. That's 200 feet from a flowing river, 200 feet from a stream. So that's, I consider that a stream, right?
Yep.
So it'd be 200 feet. So that'd be 200 feet on each side. A thousand feet from any drink water supply reservoir. That's supplying. Okay. It does say that in what you, in what you shared with us, Tom. I, I know when I go out there, it smells to high heavens, especially in the summer. When you dump actually in wherever the current dumping site is, I don't know if you've, we've gotten complaints from people downwind. I'm, or they've just learned to live with it. Okay. Well, I'm always glad to get out of there. I mean, it, it just landfills are going to have a smell. That second L, uh, um, uh, the scale, uh, is one scale for in, incoming and the other one's for outgoing or they both can be used?
Removing the old scale.
Okay.
It was 60 years old, 40, 40 years old. It was pretty old.
I know it was out of repair a couple of times.
I'll put it to you this way. I had to put $25,000 into it about a month ago just to get us through, to get the new one running. Didn't want to do it, but we had to have a scale. So.
Right.
It's unfortunate, but it's not worth saving. It's.
And the new, new one is up and operational now? Okay. My main concern is that pond and getting too close to the, the pond. Cause I know it's got a leach and eventually going to be in the big blue river. So I, that's probably my main concern. I mean, it's going to be diluted, but it's, that has to be.
I don't know when it's appropriate to need same thing.
I'll be up at Steve there.
Go ahead.
Bill Furby, uh, there is.
Could you throw him the microphone, please?
There is a very, very.
Mr. Mr. Furby, could you hang on a second?
Yeah, we're live streaming.
We're live streaming, so we have to have your mic up.
People at home are near that.
Yeah, there is a very significant underwater aquifer that runs from the, that northwest corner of what they're calling, uh, parcel number two, uh, that runs down over the hill and, and it has, I've not seen it myself, but it's just kind of a legend there. And it feeds the small house that's down over the hill, runs underneath there. And it's, uh, I know that, of course, that underground aquifer that goes through the, goes all through Blue River Valley there.
Right.
That's what the city taps out of out north. Of course I realized, and it's great that, that, uh, Mr. Butler mentioned that they, they look at, when they sample, they look at upstream and downstream both. But, uh, that's, uh, I know that's, now is that dotted line? Is that the power line right away? It's to the north? That the edge of, of the old Cronk place?
The, uh, gas line here, this is part of our property line and also matches up with the black dash one is the.
The, the north, the northwest corner, that's, that's where Buster was working on the, that's where he was working on everything?
That, that was our.
Okay. So that would be Cronk's property on there to the E, uh, uh, the old Cronk place on it. That would be the power line right away.
This is the dam right here. And I think it's like right in here is that, that's where.
No, that's okay.
So what is the dash line then? You've got a solid line.
This one?
Yes.
Or this one?
A red one.
That red one represents the setbacks that you can have for a landfill. Like you were talking about 200 feet. This would be so far from the, uh, our property line, so far from, uh, residents. And that's why we have, and if you look, it's kind of square. Cause like I was talking about how you want to square up landfill. This curve right here is extremely difficult to build. And that's why we're trying to square things up this way.
I know back in the fall, I had to go up to the top of the mountain along the east edge. And it sure seemed to me like that road that went up to the mountain hovered that, uh, east boundary of that lower 40, which would have been outside that solid red line on the east. That one. Yeah. I know the road that went up there was right along the line.
The road runs this way. This is that. We're actually placing trash in this section right here now.
Right.
This is, or no, it's this one right here. And we plan to build this one next year.
Well, you're, you're digging out that very north section.
Yes.
For I don't know if underlayment or something, because I've seen it dug out and then put over underneath the, the new refuse that's being put on top of it. And after rain, I remember truckloads were coming back and forth, trying to open that up because it was so muddy. But you were digging from that very northern section, right? Cause it looked like you're almost digging for a pond there.
Well, we're actually digging, this is digging for the next, uh, cell that we're going to build. So just to give you a, a brief description of how landfills are is you typically will dig a, dig a hole. If you have, and which this site does is that you have good clay, which is impermeable to water moving through it. And there's specific testing for it. So when we build a cell, we actually have a third party engineering firm come out and test the soils, observe everything that they do and cert, send a certification report to the state. Plus we have a state inspector that comes to, and his job is specifically for landfill construction. Uh, Mike Sonnenfeld is the, the gentleman's name. He comes to, and I've been at other landfills. So I, I've dealt with them before. He'll come up, spot announcement, wants to see what's going on, seeing how the testing is going. On top of that clay, you will then put a synthetic liner, which is a. On top of that clay, you will then put a synthetic liner, which is a membrane that is specifically welded together. Then you put a cushion layer on it and then you're going to put a, a foot of drainage layer, so you're building a big bathtub. This is that, and then you have in that bathtub a low point that you pump water out. That's our wastewater, we call it leachate. That will go off to, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. This is that, and that, we test it on a regular basis and it goes to a wastewater treatment plant, almost every landfill does it. Uh, in addition to that, you have monitoring around the landfill. So if you drew a circle around our landfill, we drill groundwater wells that they sample on a semi-annual basis and compare it. And we try and get as low a detection limits on those, on the, from the laboratory to see if there's any statistical changes and they're not looking for, you know, big spikes, they're looking for just minute changes. And then we'd have to investigate, why did this change? Sometimes it's water level fluctuations. Uh, but it's very good at detecting if there's any kind of leakage from the landfill.
What wastewater treatment do you take that to?
Uh, the Newcastle one.
Okay, and there's not been any issues reported there?
In my experience, it's probably one of some of the cleanest leachate that I've seen out of any of the landfills that I've dealt with.
I feel better after you explain the red dash line is where you can currently. I, I guess the issue is if we were to approve the entire top 180 acres, I guess, is the top rectangle. Do they have to come back to us or can, would it be the same uh, ideal that they'd have to do with the state setbacks from the Pink Creek and and all the property lines or is this a done deal?
The lower part where you see the red, uh, squares, uh, or shapes, we'll call them. Those were at one point two different parcels. Over the years, there was some rezoning. They finally got to the proper zoning of I2 for those two lower portions. That upper yellow, the larger square rectangle there. Um, that's was ag as were the lower areas before they rezoned them. Then they combined the parcels, so you end up with these odd zonings across one parcel. We don't do that, that was, that should have been changed at the time. But it wasn't, we have a number of those throughout the county that slowly get addressed. So you'd have to rezone the whole parcel, you could put in the CAU if you didn't want them to develop the upper part. You could put in the CAU or come up with arrangements with them to limit how much of that upper area they could utilize. So that, right now, what they're looking at doing is inside that red dashed area includes part of the large field to the north and part of the small parcel to the west of the large one that contains that pond. But you still have to rezone the whole parcel. But you could put in the CAU that it limits them to the area that they are presenting their current request for.
I.
Does, does that make sense?
It does, I, I would feel more comfortable, just me, one out of whatever nine. I would feel more comfortable just rezoning the west 40 square of that upper 80.
That's, that, that is, that is ultimately up to the county commissioners.
Right, I'm just saying, I, me personally speaking, I'd like not to rezone that east 40 up there on that top rectangular 80 at this time. I think that opens it up. I like the idea that they're grazing cattle and that there's away from the neighboring, the neighbors and the fact that a lot of it's forested, I'd like, uh, uh, away from that, uh, pipeline. I, of everything that's been shared, I, I feel least comfortable about taking that east 40 up there on that top 80 rectangle and moving it to I2. Me personally, that's my concern.
Do we have anybody else who wants to comment on this?
Now, I said this at a meeting quite a few years back. I don't remember how long ago it was, I'll say it again. A lot of people have a not in my backyard attitude and they are in my backyard. And I accepted that when I moved there, I'm the new guy, I'm the small guy down here. Not like it was up in DeKalb County. One of the things I was, as I, one of the things I thought I understood was that all of this, uh, uh, this 150, 152 acres. Am I correct to say that is the former Cronk? Am I, well, it takes, does it also take some in, in some of Burke's? Okay, then that's all, that's pretty much the old Cronk place. And I've known for a long time that Buster's owned that, no problem with it. Um, one of the things that just occurred to me while you were talking. Uh, you know, you're concerned about, well, what's going to happen with it later on? Why does it need to be moved to agriculture? Not here to butt heads with anybody or try to throw wrench in the works, but one of the things that popped into my head when you were talking was uh, he's owned it in industrial. There's a lot of things that can happen there industrial wise. On the other side of State Road 3, you've got an excellent industrial park. Now I've helped farm that, that ground in that general area. And I don't think there's much of that is really let's just say it's not ideal for, in, in my view for what we generally think of as an industrial park per se. Uh, but over on, I mean, you've got lots, lot has been spent on developing the industrial park on the east side. And, um, I'd say guys, no hard feelings, but I mean, do we want to create something there that might actually? Nothing wrong with competition. But a lot of effort has been put in there to, to make a, uh, an ideal industrial park uh, to the east of it, so I just, I don't know, just, and one of the things I, I understood that you had to rezone the entire parcel. Well, this, this says as far as you're talking about a portion of that parcel number two. You're looking for a portion of it because part of it's already been rezoned, right? Well, it looks like it's not so much that they're rezoning a portion of it. They're rezoning the majority of it. Uh, and if it, if you have to rezone in a complete parcel at a time, is there anything that presents it from being? You know? Separated? Make it two parcels?
It was in the past.
I mean, I, you're not going to go before the commissioner and say, we wanted, I, I guess they want to present the whole parcel, well.
Leave that to Tom, I, I know in the past they.
Hey, this stuff has popped into my head and maybe I shouldn't, but it does.
No, well, that's what popped into my head, doesn't have to be all or nothing, Tom. I know in the past everything was divided up, but we've got a lot cleaner now.
It should be by guidelines, all or nothing. But an option could be to split that parcel and then have the part that they want to do and you go, that part's you know, you could split it on the other side of the creek there or this side of the creek and leave the other side ag and the new parcel, that little wedge that you create. Which would you give them that little corner?
You understand what I'm saying, I'm, I'm talking about, I, I personally would feel better if this were left as is. This 40 acres. My personal, but I don't know if that's allowed or not, you're.
Well, you could, you, you just split that parcel in that direction, you, you can kind of do what you want when it comes to splitting these parcels up, they could make it any shape that, that might fit if you want to do that.
That's just me.
Tom.
I'd just like to ask.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to ask brother a question. Why? I mean, I haven't heard the answer.
Well, I'm, I'm partially like the idea of keeping forested land or wooded land, wooded. Uh, it's upstream from, uh, the Pink Creek and I'd I guess right now I'd like to see a limitation to how big a, this landfill is going to be because they're almost adding 33% to the landfill by just going to that north 40. I I know we have to have landfills, I've used the landfill a lot. Uh, it's not in a bad location, but, uh, I know if we did the e, east 40, you've got Thompson to the north, you've got Harry Burke to the east, you've got Andrew Burke to the southeast, you've got Thomas Burke to the south. I don't know how they feel. Which one are you? Okay, so so at any rate, I don't know how you feel, I just you don't like it? Well, I, I wouldn't like it, but I don't, I live five miles from there, so I don't I don't, I'm not downwind from what.
Getting closer though. I mean, it's just, it's just not getting closer, closer and closer. That's the way we feel about it.
And my other concern was the pond, uh, eventually not very many yards going into the Big Blue River, which at one time was considered one of the environmentally worst from the I-DIM in the, in the state, we've cleaned that up, I just I hear what you say about leaching, I just, I'm, I'm still concerned, I appreciate the engineering and the soil samples and everything. I just.
Let, let me ask you guys a question. Inside the hatched area of the proposed expansion in the, in the southern part. Uh, yeah, that part down there, if you were to take that little corner where it goes into the woods and section that off so that you didn't expand into any of those upper parcels, how much additional area are you going to pick up? It's not being used right now for Phil, right?
This area here, I think is about three acres.
Okay. So, so this area is not being used right now, is that right?
That is not, no.
But that's, that's part of the area though that you're going to.
This is already zoned.
Right. But you don't have a CAU for that part? Or do you?
I think that's in the original.
That's in the original CAU?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that's, that's where like usually if you're making changes, this is you come back and you have to go through, it's zoned a certain way.
Right.
But then, you know, if he's concerned about taking down trees, that's usually addressed in a, a CAU that before you do this.
Right.
You come before with a.
So in your plans with I-DIM right now, are you permitted to use that area?
No.
But if you.
We're permitted only to here.
So could you get permitted out to there?
Yes. It would take a while, we'd have to do a lot of engineering work and there's a lot of restrictions that they usually.
Sure, yeah.
Because how this was permitted is slightly different than the way it is current.
I'm just trying to think of options that might address some of the things that Mr. Gray brought, brought up, you know, potential areas with this being an objection.
I think it seems to be one of the sticking points is the upper parcel being completely rezoned for whatever expansion may or may not come in the future. Uh, I think the little wedge piece down there is not as critical and possibly even the I know Ken is not wild about the three acres of woods there. But I think it's whatever possible future expansion going all the way up into there. And I've seen the original pool maps for where that possibly could flood, so and Tom helped me out here on this. But there's a pretty wide area from the, where the pond is now from the conservancy that runs back, that backs up along that creek that could during a monsoon season flood back through there, which would create a lot of issues for you guys on either side of that property. And I know there's concerns about the wetland that's in there right now. Uh, this conversation with the Red Tail Conservancy about setbacks and, and I don't know if they were fully aware of how close you guys were going to be, it kind of it gives us added questions that we don't have answers for right now.
I know Mr. Ferbly mentioned that we sit over an aquifer, I, I remember Tom, we talked over a year and a half, two years ago about the fact neighboring counties are wanting to tap our underground aquifer because we're blessed by having much of the county. I mean, it's been 100 years that Newcastle's tapped that aquifer underneath where the, uh, soccer fields are at, at the park. Um, but if you look at a map, the, whoever put that out from the state, a large section of Henry County's sits over an aquifer, again, we're blessed because, uh, other growing counties like Rush County was wanting to tap with their growing industrial park of lying all the way up to Henry County because they have a fraction of what we have. So the underground water supply is a concern, I know it's a concern with the people at the data center that's being discussed at Knightstown and all those things. Uh, I think we have to really, geologically, we have to protect our water supply. Uh, they thought the gas wells that were found in east central Indiana 100 years ago would last 100 years, they tapped them out in like 25 years. So it, it's a concern. Our, our water supply is a concern.
Um, could I, I'd like to go back to that, my statement earlier. I mentioned, I, I referred to as an aquifer. But the reality, you know, aquifers really think what's on down there to the ways. Now, on my property, you can dig down that far and it's just, it's just across the from what I understand what we're looking at. That north line is the power line right away. There's a power line right away, the high tension line that runs along south, uh, the north side of, the north side of Walmart. Is that correct? I believe it is, okay. But I'm, I'm just the other side of that and I can go up there and say on the backside of my place. In other words, along that just power line right away from, I can dig, take a shovel, time I dig down that far, it's filling with water.
So a lot of.
But that water up there that I referred to that goes on, it's actually, um, I believe it's more like a, a, a spring, whether how far subsurface it is or if it's almost the equivalent of an artesian well. I don't know, but that needs to really be, I'm going to say something else to this. And guys, I'm not trying to beat anybody up. But, and, uh, you know, somebody said something about relations with the neighbors, you know, he asked what they're doing different to Buster. Buster'd always treated his neighbors great. And one of the things that, uh, I, I see lacking, uh, at the moment, I mean, does anybody remember how many years ago they, they petitioned to rezone some of it, to expand the landfill? Anybody remember how far back that was?
71 was one.
Well, there's, there's a much more recent one.
94.
Say again?
94, I think was.
Well, 94, uh, as I understood it, that that, that expansion was supposed to last a pretty long time, pretty, but, uh, I went down there in advance of the meeting and there were, Randy had prints all laid out and he knew exactly where he was going to go with what what he had proposed for expansion of the landfill. I mean, it was, the boundaries were on there. And you've got that here, but you've got this other big parcel over there and uh, and I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I, I don't know how far along Randy was at that, that. I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I, I don't know how far along Randy was at that, at, at time, but I, I think you guys holding off, I mean, uh, on that 40 acres, I mean, you don't even know, at this point, even though it's feasible, is it, is it, do you feel like it is feasible to have landfill in that east area later on? You think you would likely get approval from the, from?
One of the things is that I want to jump back to is, is you talked about protection of the aquifers. And Idam takes this very seriously. They actually have a specific term called an aquifer of significance, which has, can, is basically a formation that can produce over 200 gallons per minute. This is, that's where they actually change the design of the landfills. If you're over an aquifer of significance, you have to have a certain separation between the bottom of landfill, or you have to have a double liner landfill. This is that what, what you're doing is basically the same thing that you do on the bottom and then you do it a second time and you monitor that water that's in between the two liner systems. And that's basically your, it, 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 let's say the primary system does have a problem, you have a way to remediate it that way. Now, until we do groundwater monitoring into this area up here and see what kind of, uh, water we can actually, actually can produce, that's what dictate what we'd have to do for the design. Same thing for this area here, we're, you know, we're looking at where we're going to have to put, uh, wells. The other is, is that you can actually raise the floor of your landfill 15 feet up. This is to be away from where that top of the surface water is. That's the other alternative that you do. They allow you to have basically impermeable material between the two. This is that. And I know recently the, we, we've been in conversation with Idam because there was an interpretation back in 98 that there was an aquifer of significance there. And that was right when the definition was coming out. And at least verbally, I haven't seen it in writing yet, is, is that they're, they've determined that this is not an aquifer of significance underneath the, the existing landfill.
I'd sure like to see that in, that report in, in writing because again, I know there's, has to be an aquifer of significance, or it wouldn't have supplied the city of Newcastle a hundred years, you know, a few miles from there. So maybe not right underneath there. I'd like to know that for sure.
Separation, you may be 200 feet down.
Probably is.
And, and that, that's where Idam concentrates on, uh, a certain distance to what, what they see as water table. This is that on that, and then they allow in the regulations, that 15 foot of separation.
Tom, I know in the past, and I read in your report that we could either recommend for approval, deny approval, or with modifications of the proposed zoning change. Does that last area, modifications of the proposed zoning change allow us to do what I was suggesting on dividing up that upper 80 into, split it up in 40? Is that a modification that would be allowed?
It would be their, it's their property. They would have to parcel it out in, in the plan that would work for them. They can still own the property.
But it's up to us to rezone.
The commissioners.
Well, we make a recommendation.
I'll say, I don't know if there's any more discussion. Uh, I also think there's another option for right now, so we seem to have several unanswered questions that we need to have addressed. Maybe we should move the table this for now. Because we're kind of at an impasse of what we think we should or shouldn't be doing. And there's other entities that have expressed interest in legal matters with, uh, the wetland and some other things that I was contacted about. So personally, I would recommend that we table this till we get all those answers.
Adding to that, I would like to see, uh, something in writing about the aquifer, something in writing from the Blue River Conservancy. Or you know what my thought is? I would make a motion to table this. Now, this doesn't, this means we could take this up as early as our September meeting. Is that correct? If we had the answers to those questions? I would make a motion to table based on the same criterion explanation that Steve gave.
Got a motion and a second to table? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And our next meeting would be third Thursday in September? Okay.
And Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that takes away from discussing the CAU, doesn't it? Okay. So next up was, do we have any old business? New business? I have none.
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Motion.